States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning. Does everyone have a chance to review the agenda? Are there any additions, excuse me, are there any objections to the agenda? Are any conflicts of interest hearing none will stand approved. Uh, Madam Mother, would you read us the minutes of the last meeting?
Sure, October twenty twenty four. October twenty four, twenty twenty three, let's not rush time away, right? Sorry. I doubled up that twenty four again. The Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Ty, Rosberg Chairman presiding, members present were Schultz, Dozart, Rosberg, Mulvar and Hayden. Minutes of the previous meeting read and approved. On motion, the board recognized claims to public health and approved claims for all other departments. Board approved hiring of Jamie Cook, second deputy vital records specialist. Uh, Recorder's Office. A motion was made by Schultz, second by Hayden to approve the collective bargaining agreement. July twenty one, twenty twenty four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty seven wage increases, wage schedules and increase in clothing allowance. For Crawford County Highway Engineer Engineering Bargaining Unit Employees Motion Passed unanimously. Motion was made by Schultz, seconded by Dozart to approve the snow removal bid. From Phil's Lawn and Landscape Lawn Landscaping and Nursery LLC Motion Passed unanimously. Marcia, Marcia, well Bachman gave the board an update on the C C Happy Cats Incorporated. The board had a discussion about tower funding on motion duly seconded, the board adjourned at eleven AM. Agendas for the next meeting are posted available to courthouse on Friday, four thirty PM preceding the next meeting.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any objections if not, goes standard approved as read. Okay. Jean is actually on, but uh, she's in Colorado. Mr. Mulvar, would you like to begin this with a report?
Sure, um, quick update and I'll bring this up when he comes up. Uh, talked to Henry this morning in Manila, contractor did move in.
Yeah.
For the shop.
Cool.
Hopefully, you know, the rest of the week looks pretty good. Back in the fifties, sunny, might get a good week to get that concrete board for the foundation. That's good news. What I think, there's a few ISAC things coming up. Um, ISAC registration for the ICIT scholarship is online. Um, I've got a couple of Board of Directors meetings coming up. Uh, ISAC University and I think there's another supervisors meeting, January first, online registration is open.
For the supervisor meeting? I haven't seen that yet.
I gotta go back to the website, it's just registered for. The university, but the January first one. Anyway, look on their website. Um, the other thing. Craig and I and Jean were there at the PTO meeting with the department heads. I thought it was good discussion. I mean, Terry was there too, uh. Nice to get all department heads together. PTO seems like quite a hurdle to adjust or transition into.
That's what I was gonna ask, did after that meeting, did it seem doable or did it seem? Kind of where we were the other day, just still out there and uh.
I don't think we, there was a general consensus based on people speaking. What it seemed like is that our current system we have, if we tweak it a little bit. We could get by by continuing with what we have. Um, without going to a PTO system. It's kind of what.
That's what I gathered.
Like I said, that's not a consensus, I don't think of what the people said, but that's kind of what I shot.
I think the, the biggest thing that me and Terry can talk as the first department head. The biggest concern is when you're trying to hire someone new, that new person is like, I have no time, I have no time. Kid gets sick, I know. And somehow trying to address that, and it was thrown out there thinking, just group thinking. Maybe they get three extra personal days off, maybe you. Accumulate those three days, maybe you increase the upfront vacation time. There's some ways to tweak that and I don't know, I don't know what you're thinking.
And that's what it seemed like is that when hiring people, our current system, you don't get any time off until you're worked a year. And so could you accumulate days off on a monthly basis or on a work basis? Meaning every two weeks you acquire something or every month you acquire a little bit.
That's what we did in the military, every month.
You know, just so that you can get something in case there's an emergency that comes up. And I see Jean has her hand up, so uh, sounds like, looks like Jean wants to weigh in on the.
Jean, did you have something?
Way your little heart out.
She just said hi.
Unmute.
Or are you just waving hello?
Okay.
But we'll keep talking.
So Terry, I mean, is that how what you got?
Yeah, I mean, that might be the most, cause I think that's the biggest accomplishment we're trying to, is that new hires have that time off. So, and instead of accruing it, they could be earning it and using it. And we could, you know, there's could be policies developed to regulate that so that someone doesn't just. Well, because they're only gonna use it, they're gonna earn it gradually. They could earn it by pay period, based on the number of hours they work, if they're a full-time employee. Um, whatever, that kind of stuff, so. I mean, it's not like they could come in second month, take forty hours of vacation, cause they're not gonna have that on the books. You know, so.
Mine, I guess my one thing that I'm trying to wrap my head around or working the details out. Is it a one-year and done type deal for those new hires? I mean, you have, you can accrue these extra.
Then they, no, then they just go on our plan, they go on our regular schedule.
Well, that's what I mean, they need to get them upfront.
They don't get all of them.
No.
They earn them by pay period.
And then by the time they hit year one, they're into the full scale.
Yeah.
But it's not like they can get paid out on them or.
Well, that would have to be, that would be in policy.
Right, write that in the policy.
Because I know part of our policy is you have to have worked a full year to get paid out your accrued time. So I think it would be the same if someone left in under a year, they wouldn't get paid out for that. The only thing you have to pay out is comp time, cause they worked that time.
Yeah, I think that. Me, the system that we have has worked for a long time. Well, I think the system so.
And I don't know what, I don't know what brought up.
I know one of the big concerns was switching, I mean, switching around, you know, we had one, one person was on vacation. And then had to take his husband or something to the hospital and they wanted to switch it to. And to me, them are the, them are some other things that need to be cleared up on this. You know, this playing chess and checkers with your time off to, that, that was one of the things that PTO would have solved. It would have been whatever it is, you're done.
Right.
And then there'd been no questions and there'd have been no confusion and you know.
Don't make HR's famous job easier.
What?
If there was no different posture.
Well, it'd make it easier if department heads didn't change their mind on a whim.
Well.
I mean, I'm just saying.
Sometimes you have to, because we can't control part, department heads and their yearly operations.
Right, well, we can write policies that should help with some of that, if they follow them, that is.
If they follow.
Yes.
Yeah. And that's, and that's the thing is, that was one of the things is, we can write all the policies we want, but if it's an elected official.
Right.
You know, and they choose not to follow that.
Nevermind, I think, right, I think Jack said that he's had three counties that came to him.
Cause they had a policy too.
And we're looking at possibly switching to a PTO system and none of them did. Yeah, so, and he's also said that, cause we brought up the question of what would happen if you kept the old system and did a PTO for the, for new hires? And he was not taking that either.
When I, when I, I called Jean to ask her what all went on at the meeting and uh, sounded to me like the biggest thing that, the biggest reservation from moving to this is what happens to people's times they got. And to me, I mean, that was obviously a legit concern when we were sitting here discussing this at the board that, before you guys, or before that meeting was had. I, I don't see why you couldn't say, all right, you've got X number, you know, if you're on the present system. We'll, we'll set that bank aside that you've got saved up and you got two years to use it. You know, and I'm just throwing out a, what if, you can say three, you can say one, you can say ten if you want, I don't, that's up to you, the board, but. You know, if, find a way to help them use that. And uh. Obviously, they're gonna be building new under the PTO as we go, but you know, to me, there's ways we should be able to convert that over. And what can't be converted could be used within a two-year time period where you lose it. I mean, it's just like what we were in the military, once you get to a certain number, you use it or you lose it. You know, I mean, it wasn't like you could keep banking for now and for, yeah, Jean, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm unmuted, I uh, I don't know, I'm on my phone instead of my computer, so I'm gonna have to limit it. But you're exactly right on what I felt was the biggest concern. You know, our, our problem's always gonna be, just like you guys were talking about. Um, if the department head slash elected official chooses to not abide, you know, follow the policy that we always have in place. That says you need to manage comp time and have them take it in a reasonable time. Even uh, PTO isn't going to, you know, accomplish anything. But I think if we can have a tool in our, our toolbox to help new employees so that they don't uh, feel like they have to work a year before they get a day off. And what we'd wanna be aware of is that you wouldn't want somebody that is there for a month and knows they're not gonna stay, takes their five days and. Those are the things that we'd have to have uh, checks and balances on, but I think if we tweak, like Craig said, tweak our current policy. We would accomplish uh, some things that we were looking for, but what we really need to do is make sure that department heads slash elected officials are managing the policy we already have in place. So that's, that's my two cents.
Okay, thanks Jean. So what if we do, what if, what if we think about something like this? All right, we're gonna try to re uh, redo our handbook. And uh, I think that every department should either abide by that new handbook or create their own handbook. That's got uh. HR approved of, so to speak, you know, whether we're using Jack or whatever. And uh. I think that if they're not gonna, when, when we set up policies on how to handle these things. And the department head wants to do their own way of doing it, I think that they should, it should be mandated that they have to, in the, in the gut, in the interest of HR. Fairness to all employees in that department. From, from this day forward, you know. That they either write that they're not gonna have a policy, state that they will have no policy, or that they'll. This will be their policy and they'll abide by that, or that they'll use the county's handbook policy. But I think that in the interest of HR, cause we all know that that seemed to be the big deal is we're all scared to death of lawsuits down there the other day. I, I, I think it's imperative that we have an HR program, because I, I'd much rather be sued because we were trying to do it right. Rather than just cause we were doing whatever we want, does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
I mean, I, I think that that's consistency is, is what I'm trying to get at here. I mean, I think that's what we need to try to be achieving, you know, so that one employee doesn't get one thing and another gets another. I think that's, that's what we, that's, that's, that's a bigger risk of a lawsuit than.
Well, Ty, the other part of that is, and I'm sorry, I can't raise my hand and then unmute at the same time, somehow I'm having problems with that. So I might be interrupting, but I apologize. I think that um, if the uh, person who we've hired, whether it be the elected official that got elected or a department head that has been uh, put in place. If they sign that they will follow the policy that we have. I think there needs to be a, a way to ensure that they do that. And if they choose not to, to sign it, then they've said that, nope, we're not gonna follow that. Uh, but uh, like we've talked before, a law without any land, uh, with a land without any laws. Is a dangerous place to be where you do one thing for one person and the other person, eh, not gonna do that for them. I think we really need to be consistent in an effort to stay out of a lawsuit and that's, that's part of the reason to make sure we're all doing things the same.
Right, and I guess on that end, that's why I think, Ty, you'd wanna make sure that we have just one policy manual. Cause we don't have every department head having their own manual.
I agree.
Manual and all the department heads have input into what we're putting in that manual. But then, you know, they all agree and that, and that means everyone, I mean, so. We're hiring a new assessor in the next couple of weeks or the next couple of months. Um, that assessor doesn't have their manual, it has courthouse manual, that's the one.
But well, they, but Craig, that manual is the same as our manual, so it still, still should be the policy that we did follow. And so that's kind of where we went off the rail a minute.
I'm not talking about things in the past, I'm talking about moving forward.
All the other thing is. We're on our three years to, to update the policy handbook. I think we had good turnout with department heads on talking about PTO. As we move forward, it'd be nice to ask to update the policy handbook to bring in all department heads and say, hey, here's where we're at, so we all can be on the same page. And if you don't agree.
Raise your hand, let's talk.
Yep, can I, can I ask a question of how long it would be before we could uh, tweak that for new hires? So that we can have a chance of uh, getting that employee that's a perfect fit, but they just can't think about not having any time off for a year? How long do we have to wait to tweak that?
Tweak it anytime.
Just put it on the agenda and do it.
Should we do, should we do that? Because it's my understanding that there's been some excellent applicants, but they just were too worried about if they had a sick child or a, uh. Something that came up and they just couldn't afford to take time off without pay. So let's put it on the agenda and maybe get some ideas how we can improve on our uh, new hire policy.
Put it on discussion for next week, how's that sound? Put it on discussion for next week, hopefully that'll draw the heads in and then we can go down to the next.
Yes, and I'll try to be looking up some uh, ways that other uh, agencies do things.
Wouldn't be, wouldn't be too much to ask that. We as a board ask of our department, the department heads, not our department heads, but we do have a couple that would next. Get together and bring up their best thoughts on, addressing that. I mean, we really, as a board. We're kind of the overseers, but we, we really, we manage like what? Directly, one or two people.
Right.
And by us trying to dictate policy.
Right, I agree.
Maybe not.
I agree.
The, we need to talk to the people. Right way to do it, but we're Terry or, you know, Sarah's just trying to go through this now, hiring new people, what she's up against.
Yep.
To us.
And she was one that brought, brought that to my attention, yep.
And Paul's dealing with it, I mean.
Right.
Uh. What, what makes, what would make it easier to get new people? I mean, some departments that have got a great staff, of senior people. You know, at some point in time, them seniors are gonna be retiring and they're gonna be like, no, this would make life easier for me. When you, Terry, you just went through a year ago with hiring, it may have been two years ago already.
Almost two.
Yeah. If time flies, but what, what was your struggles at that time, if you had?
Getting people to apply, period, and I had one application for one of mine.
Well, you.
You can pretty good with it.
You, you did a good job with that one application. So. Well, that, those are the things I would wanna say, I mean, if it's, if we're really just trying to go to tweak a few things to. Get some new, the new help in, maybe that's what we need to do.
That's what I mean, put it on the agenda for next week and ask the department heads to be there and then like you said, add, bring, bring your best ideas forward, because we're gonna. We wanna craft this to give you guys the, you know, the advantage of being able to use this as a hiring tool. Plus, you know, it seems that we have to find a way to do it fair for all new incoming people. You know, so we're consistent.
Yep.
Well, and we all sit on, you know, the different boards, conference board, public health, YMA, different things that have boards that govern them. And maybe uh, talk with some people on those boards to see what uh, thoughts they would have to bring to the table too and try to get the best plan out there.
Well, I think like Greg will probably be here if you ask for department heads and.
Yep, Kim will be there.
Most likely.
We need to have email sent out to all department heads and.
To be thinking about it.
Maybe even ask for a representative from the mayors and the school boards to show up. If necessary, twice we are here.
Let us know how the school does it and how the city does it to, to get the best applicants.
That sounds like a different meeting than me.
Yeah, does maybe.
As far as.
But there are departments in our, in our, within our county structure.
Oh.
You know, you got the conference board that governs the.
They make up their own policy handbook.
Yeah, whatever, I, I mean.
All right, just, just a thought.
We need input, but.
See what we get next week and see what we can work up.
Here's the thing, if they can pay whoever the heck they want, however the heck they want, as long as it's in their budget, they can do the same thing. I mean, that's kind of how I read it in the, in the, in the, in, in the state stuff, four, four, one. They can do, or you know, that led me to look at other stuff anyway and ask more questions. They don't have to acknowledge our handbook either. That's no diff, that has no more bearing on them than the budget. You know, I mean, they can do whatever they want, unless they sign off on it and then, and then they're, then they put themselves in the way of the lawsuit. And so if you do have something that everybody agrees to, then, and they all sign it, well, then we have a concurring handbook. But that's why I brought it up earlier, if, if they don't concur with how the main body of the courthouse would like to have the handbook. And they wanna do their own thing, then they should be answerable to the people that elect them. By them being transparent with what's, with what they're using for a handbook.
Right.
I mean, one way or the other, we're all, we're, we're all accountable to one, one group, people that are paying taxes and vote for us. And, and to me, that's, that's, that's the, that's even after the four, four ones of the world and, and all that stuff. If the taxpayers don't think you're doing a good job, they're gonna hook you out. And assuming they got a choice, maybe, but the uh. You know, I, I think that that's why I brought that up earlier about the handbook, you know, give them an option if, if, if you don't. We still think it's imperative that you have a handbook, that you're following, cause it keeps you. Basically, gives you some, some CYA for, for lawsuits. I mean, even if you don't wanna use ours, I wouldn't understand why you wouldn't wanna use.
Right, especially if you have input in it.
Yeah, exactly.
And we did that the last time, uh, you know, we've updated our handbook in the last ten years and our department heads have always had input in it.
But you know, in ten years, are we, how, how many different people are sitting here or how many different people are sitting in the other?
Oh yeah, I know, and it gets tweaked every year though, I mean, it's not like it's just been stagnant for ten years, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's imperative that all the department heads like all of them accept it as. That's something we need to do, but never. Cause I couldn't see if the attorney's office played, different than what the recorder's office is different than what the treasurer's office. That would make Amy's job pure hell.
Well, you'd hope not, but you just, uh, you just.
According to law, I mean, it could be that.
Adopted, excuse me, I think it was section two point one two in the, in the handbook about um, expenditure reimbursement. And we still have people not following it.
I've noticed, well, it seems like through claims, it's like, I know all that, what?
So, you figure that one out and let me know.
Okay.
Just saying.
Yeah, you're not wrong.
That's where we were on that, that's still, we're still on your remarks.
Sorry, Danny.
Thanks, thanks for letting us think about it.
Nothing to be sorry about.
Yeah.
Um, the other thing, I didn't look at statewide, so registration's not open yet. That's a one day.
February, yeah, that's always just a one day.
That's a one day, yeah.
That's the one I was hoping.
I was thinking January, but it's February, yeah. So I got.
Okay. Mr. Schultz.
Couple of things. Colin brought my attention yesterday, we haven't done anything with the township cemetery yet, so. I, I don't know how we're, I said I'd bring it up today and proceed with that, so I'm gonna get.
What's he doing about it, is he writing that? Deed or?
Yeah, yeah, it was just on his list of things to do and he noticed it yesterday and I said, well, we'll talk about it today and see if we can get that ball moving again. Quick claim deed that one cemetery that is in our, in our hands, through the township where it belongs, so. Seems like a simple deal, but I don't think it probably will be. But it's really not our cemetery.
Burial though, once. That was enough. I'm not doing that again, I'm saying.
So.
That can keep mowing though, he's pretty good at it.
Yeah.
How much does it cost? You know, that got brought up to the church meeting the other day, what does it cost to mow that?
Two fifty, it's three hundred a time, I think.
I think so.
Yeah.
And that's what the Lutheran cemetery was paying, it was like.
Lot of obstacles.
Twenty five hundred, two thousand a year depending on the mowing, the year.
Well, there's a lot of weed, like you're saying, obstacles.
Yeah, so I think they earn their money.
They'll learn that.
And I'm sure they wear their lawn mowers out, cause between all the.
Bit of.
Holes and, you know, just stuff hitting stuff, it's not hard, it's damn easy on us.
Oh.
Just correspond with the issue we talked about last week with the fair and that, uh, in regards to that. I always say displeased, I don't, I've disgruntled, upset person at the races. Corresponded with that person and uh, said that's out of our wheelhouse, we really have nothing to do with that. And her reply back is, what, what do you fight, have against an eleven-year-old disabled kid? I was not very happy with that response. So it's, it's nothing that we, we have nothing against, it's just not our, not our fight to take up.
By law.
You know, we all go fight the hospital for stuff, that's not our fight. But Iwakota clearly defines the rights of the supervisors, the rights of the fair board, rights of the hospital, rights of the school. And we don't fit in that, we don't fit in these, in this whole, you know, it's not our deal. I haven't, she never replied back to me after that, I was like.
Well, I can understand frustration if you don't think you're getting something and you wanna try to go to where you can find it, but you gotta go on the right paths too. I mean, we really don't, I mean, and I'm not prepared to tell the, all the rest of those kids that we're gonna cut your funding for the four H programs and that.
Iwakota clearly defines that, we.
We have to do that, yeah.
We have to do that.
That's what I'm saying, is that, that would, that would, that's the only thing we have is, was, you know, is that we donate money due to law. And obviously for what's right, I mean, that's a good, good program for. The, the community process, but the uh, I don't know, I understand, I understand some frustration, I mean.
Yeah.
I've, I've heard from the same person, I mean, I understood the frustration, but. You can't ask us to do what we're not allowed to do.
We have, we have, we have no, we can individually or whatever, talk with the fair board or whatever, you know, but that's. As an acting of the board is not.
Exactly.
Not our position. I think the public perception is always that the board supervisors.
As some almighty hammer.
Right, exactly, that, when it, when it says board supervisors, I mean, you guys supervise everything in the county, right? And that's not the case, but certainly in public perception, uh, I've been one of those before I got on this board, was, was that.
Yeah.
So it's easy to see that, hey, if I'm, I just gotta keep going up the ladder, now I'm at the top of the ladder with the people that make the decisions. And unfortunately, that's not the case. It definitely is a learning moment, your first year as a supervisor, and I would agree. So. I don't know if we'll get brought into that anymore or not, I hope I try to spell it out as plainly as possible, but uh, it's not our fight to take up. Which in the back.
Well, even if they tried to, I think it's clearly shows that. We have no authority here anyways, so.
Yep.
We gotta stay in our lane, so to speak.
We need to watch our own bower, yeah, keep our eye on our own bower, most of the time we'll get better off. And I'm like, we, little bit of discussion earlier, I need to set up a conference board meeting. And, um, like we, a little bit of discussion earlier, I need to set up a conference board meeting.
Yep.
To start that process.
Reading.
About all that. Well, it looks like the bridge is coming a while. I was gonna, they got skid loader parked on each side, so.
Trying to keep people away, yeah.
Two more weeks?
We come over, two weeks.
Wait, maybe this week, no.
At least the money pit wasn't our money pit.
Exactly. That's all I hear.
Okay, Mr. Dozark.
Uh. Had a meeting yesterday, um, Kenny, I called at the last minute with our children's imagination station. WCCA and the twenty eighty board, uh, concerning, um, the playground. And so that's kind of our initial meeting, and I think it was good because we could. I guess really see what maybe the issue is and some things that, uh, one of the things they wanted was some removal. Of some wood structures that are currently, um, in their playground. And I think between us and the city and, uh, maybe the school that we'd be able to get those structures out of there. And, um, one of them is a sandbox that's got a roof on it because you need so much, um, shade area in a. Playground and the other one is just a shade area that is a wood structure and some of those wood structures, I guess, as far as people that do the. Um, annual reviews, you know, you can get splinters, that sort of thing with little kids, and so what's not a good thing. So it's just, uh, but that's the first step, I think, uh.
That's a good step.
Then we need to find out, uh, exactly what kind of money we need, uh, to raise and, uh, go about it that way, but, um. So it was a good initial, um, meeting that we had, and I did talk to Paul, Paul said, yeah, they'd be going to. You know, do whatever they need to do, send a podcast down or excavator or something and truck and they work with the city to get that done.
Perfect.
Um.
And did they say anything about the log cabin down there?
Where the log cabin did not come up at all. The log cabin did not come up at all. It has come up certainly in public. Um, and, um, on Facebook, that's been a major discussion. Once again, I guess that's out of our real house, not exactly in our way.
Yes, they are, they in our lane, yeah.
They in our way.
I knew after Facebook post, it was pretty lengthy, one of the gentleman that is an expert in restoring an old building that like taking drives around Charter Road. Just to show his.
Skill.
His skill set.
Yeah.
And I think based on our discussion today, I mean, I do have, uh, a meeting at noon today with that twenty eighty board. But we mentioned about what does the school do? I think Scott Larson is there, he's business manager. I was gonna ask him what the, the school does for PTO or new hires. And that's really all I got, Ty.
Okay, well, thank you. I don't have ten minutes worth, I don't know, we'll see, we'll give it our best shot. I had central Iowa juvenile detention, I had to, uh, kind of. Anyway, uh. Uh, they, they've been having some issues with the adult waived kids being a little bit unruly. Some of the more rowdy ones, which, uh, um, even in their. New facility that's actually works great, they still have to call in. A regular law enforcement official because they don't have anybody like that on staff, so they have to call in the local police. And, uh, they've been getting a lot of calls. And, uh, so the police chief was there and I didn't get to hear all the details, but, uh. Um, they're, they're evaluating, you know, they do a great job coming in, I mean, that's, that was the one thing that commented the staff. When the police come in, they're really good, but they're using pepper spray and different things like that, which what, which juvenile detention folks aren't allowed to use. But law enforcement can to calm down a situation. But anyway, taser cartridges, uh, they were discussing the expense of that, so apparently they're using them more than you think. Uh, but just like with the fire department, every time you roll, something's gotta have, you know, gets used and needs to be, I mean, you know.
Well, it kind of goes back to my, what I've said all along, you know, that. How do you, how do you bill for that, you know?
Yeah.
Uh.
Exactly.
The state of, I, I, I would imagine the state of Iowa has probably got something that says. Yeah, whatever.
Yeah, pretty good.
Just buy some more stuff, you know, unfortunately, and it ain't fair to. The local law enforcement, but of that county or that city to have to flip that bill for all that, but.
Well, and I don't think that, I mean, I've got to assume the same up at Cherokee. I mean, to have to have. A full-time law enforcement on staff would get way more expensive than being able to reimburse for their, what they're using.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're on duty anyway, so they're getting paid, so I mean, and, and I, I don't know, I can't imagine Eldora is a high crime for, at town, uh, you know. But, uh. Action centers got some high crime individuals, you know, and because they've got the size and. And, and room for more, I mean, if we ever get a, the cap lifted, they'll be full. And that would also mean they're most likely going to be full of the adult wave more than, and, and don't get me wrong. Adult wave aren't their only problems there. I mean, there's twelve year olds that aren't on, as adult wave that are still extremely rowdy, you know.
Ty, do all of the kids that I get brought in, are they evaluated or maybe, you know this too, are they evaluated right off the bat? And prescribed any medication to help with a mental health disorder or behavioral problem or?
Yeah, there, there are counseling and then there is psychiatric evaluation done.
I'm thinking, I'm trying to think back through that too, I think evaluations come at a court request, I think.
Exactly.
I don't think it's automatic, but. I think JCO or the judge has to request an evaluation.
Tidying off every kid had to be evaluated and.
No, what level of evaluation is that? There might be an intake type evaluation, you know, when you bring. Client in, then they go through a checklist of stuff, but maybe the, the evaluation I'm thinking of is a more in-depth.
Yeah.
More to order of evaluation. I'll think, I.
I'm just curious, and then if they use that as far as certain medications or certain things to trying to help therapy, counseling.
Yeah, you're not wrong, I'll tie ass, I'll ask and see if we get to.
On the event, I would, I would say, pretty similar, I mean, I know that they. And actually, not this meeting, but the meeting before, telling actually they were commenting on the kids and, and whether we really needed to have counselors there for them. And he said, I, he said, hands down, he said, this helps more kids than it don't, you know, the coun- having the counselor there. He said, even if, even if the state said that you, you know, no, were no counselor required, and we recommend that for financial purposes, you don't have them. He said, I would never be in that court. He said, I think that the counseling services probably do more than, more good than that. He said, no problem.
That's a pretty good statement, because, you know, when you and I talk about. The problem is that caused the, the headline, so to speak, but we never talk about the ones that are in there for.
Yeah.
Do one stint and never go back.
Exactly.
And we talk about probably the criminals that are going to be, move on to the, the adult court system at some point in time. We talk about them regularly because of the headlines.
Exactly, or the bigger drama case, you bet, you're right.
So that counseling, it'd be, I bet it does help a lot more than. We let, we know about, and Tony would cry to be, I'm sure it would be.
Yeah.
Good to speak on behalf of that.
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, I, I know he's a strong advocate for all the counseling and psychiatric help we can give kids, but it's. It all comes at an expense, you know, and quite frankly, the counties are left holding the bill. We keep getting our budgets cut, but we keep, you know. With, just like groceries cost more, all this stuff costs more, you know, I mean, and these professionals to have them around, I mean, that's, it's not cheap. So I mean, that's, that, that is, that has been a big discussion as of late over at our commission meetings, and I'm sure you guys have been discussing. But, uh, and then there was, you know, that one particular incident, uh, there was some questions about. Was a police got called in and, and I suspect in all the commotion, you know, you don't, you don't take a lot of time to write down notes of what's happening. You know, so you're doing a lot of things off of memory and stuff and afterwards writing up reports, you know, I suspect that's a policeman's job every day, you know. But, uh, they, they did, they did talk about wanting to, you know, have this reports, uh. You know. Let's see, let me read how they wrote this down. Census reports for the show and for the adult juvenile, and I think it's more to help with the court stuff and what have you. But. Anyway, uh, then the other big thing that they discussed over there this time was that, uh, they're, they're wanting to build a solar field and Tony's been working on that. They've got a big open spot that's kind of out, out of the way there and he wants to build a, a big solar area. And, uh, it's actually, because they use so much electricity, pretty much everything in there operates off electricity. Uh, the cost savings in it, you know, they, I don't know if anybody's ever checked into solar, most of that stuff, you know, they. Schedule you to where you're going to pay it off in ten to fifteen years, but it's twenty-five years worth of warranty and all that stuff on there. And it all sets your costs dramatically, and I suspect with. How much electricity is used there is probably a good thing to go. Most of the board seems to be in favor of it. And, uh, they've got a, they've got the room for it and it'll be a sizable, I mean, I don't think it'll look like the, some, the solar field on their way to Manella or anything, but. It's, it'll probably be about half that big, it'll be a good sized area. So I think that's probably a good cost saver, you know, that's the other good thing about Tony is he does try to find ways to help. Manage costs, so to speak, um.
Do they get a rebate or a discount?
Tax credit.
Tax credit.
Uh, well, I mean, they're basically, I mean, I, I don't know how the.
Gosh, you might go through.
And like.
American or whoever their local service provider is.
They'll, they get, you know, they do where it offsets the hour, you know, basically the cost of your solar field is your biggest expense. And then I think it's just like anybody else, you know, you got that initial cost, that monthly cost, what is it, forty some bucks or something? For utilities fee or whatever for all the internet infrastructure. And I think you ought to always pay that, but.
Maybe they want to put a windmill up. We've got the people that can help.
Throw a windmill up over by Central Iowa detention. Probably be a big hassle right next to town. But, uh, so anyway, I think that they're going to be doing that going forward, I, no thinking, I mean, it's, it seems to be moving in a positive direction there, so. And, and Tony's actually got some other facilities that are private, he's got privately, that he's put wind towers in. He's having very good, you know, very, not wind tower, sorry, solar, solar field, he, he really, he thinks they're great. A great way to help save cost and, and, you know, keep electricity. I had to talk about putting up any battery system or anything like that. It's just to offset the cost of what, what they're using. And, uh, I think that that's probably going to be, it's going to happen, I should say. Um, what else? Was there anything important that you guys were really? No, I think that kind of covers. Oh, billing policy, I knew there was something. We tip, we've always, and, and I answered kind of. Out of turn because I wasn't real sure, but I thought so. You get our bills come directly to you from Central Iowa, correct?
They probably go directly to Nate.
Yeah, they go through the JCO to.
See, and that was what they were talking about. I, I wasn't a hundred percent sure, but I said, well, if it comes to anybody in the courthouse.
I mean, if it does come to me, I take it to them.
Okay, so you would do that automatically. Here's their problem is they get some sheriff's departments out there that they're sending bills to, that nobody's ever doing anything.
Oh.
So I mean, there's some of our counties out there that were way overdue on paying, you know. And it was typically through sheriff's department. Why that, why that was, I don't know. I mean, I don't know that they send anything directly. Down to Jim's office, but.
Yeah, I don't know.
I, that, but I, I, I just thought if they sent it.
Would or could, but.
Well, they want to try to unify it or uniform it, so if they send it to, send it to you then, if it's Nate's.
The best bet is probably sending it to the auditor's office and they would disseminate it.
That was my speaking out of turn, I spoke, but I think that was safest way is to send it to Terry's office that get to where it needed to be at least. So hopefully I didn't create more work.
I think some of that sheriff's department stuff is ignore mental health type. Stuff they get paid for, it seems like.
Right.
Ours, more mental health stuff gets billed through the sheriff's department. Really.
Right, I don't know.
I, I just don't know.
I think some of that transportation can be confusing.
Yeah.
Should.
And then you throw about health districts and do it too, that are supposed to be paying for some of that stuff. And then they shove it around and say, well, this ain't our problem, and then they shove it back to whoever transported. And it's just like, not my problem, it's a mental health problem, and then they shove it back, you know, it's like.
We did end up with that on our priorities there, didn't we? Down at ISAC, um, the juvenile detention funding, wasn't that one of our priorities?
It was, we had to vote. Did you vote? Did you vote? Did you vote?
Wasn't this as one of those priorities?
I think there was something there about.
I guess I don't.
I think it did in a month.
Yeah. Yeah, I finally did, huh?
Donate event, that was, that was pretty much the Justice Central Iowa Juvenile Attention. I don't have my. Normal packet full of fluff there for you to look at. I can have. Megan printed up, I already sent it to her once, so she's still got it, but. Sitting in my truck, that's, I was on the road when I did my meeting. Anyway, uh. What else was there? Kind of a quiet week for me. Where's Paul? I made, I up that ten minutes.
No, I had no doubt.
Steve Pinkley, you know, was on.
Yeah.
Sierra Club's.
Oh, okay.
Uh, month or weekly meeting, and, uh, I went and you could watch it later. So I watched it later and, uh, he did, he gave like twelve things that he would recommend counties to do. I wrote them all down, um, all things that we, we talked about. Um, but, uh, and he was on for forty-five, fifty minutes. Uh, he was on, asked some questions afterwards.
Did he really think any of our stuff is, you know, what we can do here was, is going to be golden or? Is it going to be overruled? I mean.
It's.
If we can't get this thing.
What do you say? It's too, it's too early to tell that, you know, the judge has ruled one way. And they are appealing it, so what will the appeal process go through and what will the appeal, uh, end up? And so, you know, that's kind of where you're at with every lawsuit is you think, you know, when one judge rules, you think, okay, that, those are the rules we need to abide by. And then it gets appealed and it gets changed and it's just a ongoing process, it seems like, and I don't know if it'll ever. You know, go away, I think you, it could be in court after the pipeline's in the ground, if that, you know, if it happens.
Yeah, I think so, and then, and they're, they're not able to. Them guys right there were my prime example of why we didn't want to go to court, you know, at least we could work with them, you know, you go to court, you're done talking. You know, it's done, you know, how it's just, take what you get, you don't have a fit.
Navigator did pull out.
Yeah, I heard that. There you are. We've been eating up your excess time.
I know.
You're fine.
Oh, we got maps.
Yeah, man, he likes them to get maps, that means we're doing something.
Need another.
Kyle.
Oh, I don't think that's.
Big enough? No. You just clip it in the middle.
Let's get some.
Big flip. Oh, I was in it one morning, it's cold. At least it's not snowing, my son sent me a text when I was seven, five inches. You know, uh, other than the wind in January, we'll think today's a pretty nice day.
That's right.
Right, exactly.
That's what I remind myself on my school's day.
That's true.
We'll be long, go outside and do stuff.
Good day to get out and do some.
Yeah.
Want to go to Oklahoma?
Why not?
I, I go there fairly often, I go there.
I figured you did. Um, maybe it's used to be, and so we'll get to that later, but, uh. Um, do we want to, I know we've got the, the gentleman here from Scout. Um, and, uh. I don't know if we want to go right into that item and talk about that, it's item, uh.
It's item four.
Four on the agenda there, so.
I wondered why they walked in.
Yeah. Uh, they're a tough, tough bunch.
Yeah. We're old acquaintances, right?
For a few years, so.
We've, uh, we've kind of gone back and forth, um, I don't know if you guys want to introduce you, maybe they all know who you guys are, but.
Well, I don't miss your Dozark, probably don't.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just do a few of them, so myself, I'm Mark Wingerzki, I look after all of our development activities here in the United States or Scout. Um, well, Bobby, you can be sent out.
Yeah, I'm Bobby Canettis, I'm an associate project manager, so I'm helping out on Silver Queen, uh, out here in Crawford.
Love that.
And then Zach, I was like, probably manager at Scout, helping out on Silver Queen.
Back looks for more. Like I remember. There are really, you know, a number of things in a road use agreement. Honestly, this is the first time, this will be the fourth. Wind turbine related project that we've done. The previous three were the two projects where they developed the projects and then there was a repower. Uh, on the one, uh, over east by West Side, Northwest Side. So really three different, uh, you know, activities that, that we had. In the past, we would get together with them and we kinda had a letter, kind of a letter of understanding, kinda like we do with our utilities, kinda here's kind of our. Requirements. And so this will be the first time we've actually had a formal agreement. I think it's a good idea. Uh, to kinda set forth all of the items in there. So we've kinda gone back and forth. I sent a copy of it to all of you. I didn't really necessarily expect you to all read it in detail because that's what I've done and that's what Colin and I have looked at. Um. You know, so really essentially, you know, what we're looking at here is the condition of the roadway as there, as the project starts to unfold and, you know, how is that being taken care of? In the past, uh, here, the most recent one, we just took a, uh, and hired a part-time. Blade operator who had retired and bought that person back. And that's all they did was they just, here's a machine, here's a truck. Take care of the roads kind of as needed. And so that was kind of above and beyond that normal maintenance. And then we would send a bill to them. We've got that same type of language in here. Now, I'm assuming that I'm gonna be able to hire a part-time. Blade operator, but if we can't, it'll be a full-time person. It'll be under the same kind of arrangement, but, uh. You know, so we're looking for wear and tear on the road, kind of above and beyond what we would normally see. And, and so. Um, that particular project, the weather conditions were pretty good. And as we've talked, weather conditions can range from. What we've seen the last three years, which has been really good. To twenty nineteen, which was a disaster, or twenty eleven, which was disastrous, or, you know, early two thousands. Where the roads are in really bad shape. And so, so the doors are open. And I mean, and so the, the understanding, kind of the. You know, not only in the agreement, but as, as we, we taught is that. You know, we have to respect and take care of the roads because they become impossible. They're impossible for them as well as the people in the public that use them. And so we all have to work together. I think we have that understanding. So, um. And a lot of that's outlined here in the agreement. So you have that, you know, the condition of the roadway. Then there's the intersection improvements, cause these are large loads that are coming in that require large turning radiuses. And so. What we require there is that we have a field recon with decision makers. We want the key people that are. Gonna be on the ground. We go look at each intersection, needs to be modified. We agree on what's gonna happen there. And then they'll develop a drawing, a detailed drawing that shows that. So we're all on. There's no, no debating it. This is what we're gonna do. And, and so we've had that. It worked very, very, very well. Um, on those modifications. And then we, you know, when it's done, the modifications come back out. Uh, the other thing is, is entrances, driveways to the facilities. So there's permanent entrances and there's temporary entrances. And so the same thing would hold true there. Is that they would give us the list of entrances. We go out and do a field reconnaissance of those, take a look at them. Yes, you know, this will work here, you know, drainage concerns, sight distance concerns, whatever they may be. Uh, we'll have to, you know, look at those and approve those before any of that type of work is done. So. And then there's a, a little bit of language in there on the level B roads. There are a few level B roads in that area. That could be impacted. And. I mean, essentially if they wanna improve them, we're okay with it. Yeah, but a lot of those have, have had some work done to them. So they're in pretty decent shape already, but. They may wanna put aggregate on. That's fine, you know, so there's some of that in there as well. Essentially, that's kinda what we're looking at. Snow removal could be another issue. Uh, the language in here says that, you know. They have the ability to go if we absolutely can't get to it. But, you know, as I explained, I mean. We've got the wherewithal to within twenty-four hours have basically every road in Crawford County opened up that has to be serviced. That's not all our level Bs. That's the roads to get people in and out. So I think we're pretty efficient at that. Um, don't see that as an issue, but if there's this one-off or this, you know, we just can't get to it. They need to get to a tower site for some reason in the midst of whatever's going on, I guess. Um, they would be able to do that, so. So that's kinda the, the gist of the agreement, I guess. In layman's terms. I think it's spelled out pretty clear. I think it's. Yeah. Stuck in our interest. Yeah, I mean, we have to be, our charge is to take care of the roads and we're the stewards for the citizens. And so, and they understand that. I think it gives them. Room to work. I mean, it's, so I don't think hiring anybody's hands behind your back.
What are you guys looking at starting construction?
Yeah, Bobby, you might wanna give a.
Yeah, so looking at start of construction in April twenty twenty-five, everything up and operational. Wind turbines spinning in October thirty-first, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, so here with the, with the weather, we look at doing a two season fill. So we look at. Twenty-five, you're getting all your turbine access roads in, all your foundation in, all your collection in. Letting the project sit through the winter and then getting the turbines actually up to the twenty-six. So we, we look at a two season.
When did you hope to be done, twenty-six?
Do you start, Carroll County moved this way or do you, does he? How do you, or do you start here and move that way?
You know, that's a great question. We just wrapped up a South Dakota project and we always thought, you know, they'd just simply go north to south there and. They ended up starting in the middle and then went north and then finished up on the south side. So it, it's, it's just two things at all at this point, so.
I give you any advice, work on our county roads in the dry summertime and do Carroll County. Everybody would be happy.
That's really great advice, guy. I'm gonna have to second.
Well, you're looking for a motion. I'd make that motion to approve item number four.
Motion's been made by.
Second.
Mulbauer. Seconded by Mr. Dozark to approve the, uh. What did we call?
Road use maintenance.
Road use and maintenance agreement with Silver Queen Wind Farm. Any, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Gene, are you trying to sneak in an aye? Raise your little hand. Well, we'll just assume that we got enough anyway. Chair of both sides, Bush and Carrie.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming out.
Good luck with your construction.
Who will be siding on your behalf?
Uh, Matt Heck.
Okay, so do you want me to get two signature sheets with the original?
That'd be great. That way the county can keep one, we can.
Okay, I'm gonna make a copy of this then and have you sign two of them. And then we'll have two original signatures. We'll send both of those. Or if you wanna hold on. Are you gonna be around?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, either that or just stop back in and I'll have the two original entire documents. Over you and then, and I'll make a copy of it. You can take those two original signatures, get the signature and make one back. So.
Sounds great. We'll do it. So a lot of activity will be out here in two nights. And there's, there's a big meeting on the project as well, so. Probably saw that come up in the paper, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. Thanks, guys. Appreciate you coming.
Copy of this signature sheet and we'll get two original signatures. Hey, thanks a lot.
Mark.
Mark, what was the number?
How many turbines are there?
Seventy, up to seventy-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Seventy-seven.
There was more and then they're.
Kinda half and half too, wasn't it?
KWs, right? Gee, he's making them bigger. So they got bigger gearboxes. So the, these, their roll now was the three point four megawatt platform. So. They're just got a bigger motor in them, so you need less of them, so.
How many are in Crawford? How many are in Carroll?
We're about even, Stephen's.
I thought that's, I remember, fifty, fifty-ish.
Yeah. Yeah, gee, started on a long point five megawatt platform. They went to the two eight two. Now they've rolled out the three four, so.
You need me to print on which line?
Pretty soon they'll be.
Yeah, puts them up there on the.
Doesn't make any difference, yeah.
All good. Great, thank y'all.
Oh, thanks, guys.
Alright, yep. Thanks.
Sign on the middle one or the top one. So then they were now like forty-six and they were like forty-six, so. I am blessed with that.
And fancy lawyer word there.
They buy it.
Don't know. We don't know if it makes a whole lot of difference.
We kinda stay out. Thank you. I mean, it's just, it, it's probably good to have that one organized. We, we just have never done one. Road use agreement, this is a good idea. And I said, oh, we've never done it. We just, and I've had really good experiences with the other ones.
I think each guy.
When you said that about level Bs, I remember the Sleswig project, I think they did two. They upgraded a couple miles, yeah.
Will we need to print below?
That's good.
That's always the hard part.
Just for thought, is this something that? You still like? A TIF would apply, TIF this project and then use it towards something else. I mean, it might be something that we can.
We, uh, we, we attempted to do that. Uh, I didn't do well. Uh, so I mean, that's.
Is that a thing we gotta put to vote? I've never done it.
Well, yeah, and then anything that's within two miles of corporate limits of the city, I think this.
They can capture.
They can capture all that. See, that was the problem.
That was Sleswig.
Sleswig up there is they're gonna capture several hundred thousand dollars a year and. TIF is outside their boundaries and, you know, we're just not gonna do that, you know?
Right. You guys have to agree with them. They have to agree with you.
Right. If it's within that two mile limit on that, whatever's within the two mile limit now, if it's outside that two mile limit. Then it's a, you know, it's completely after the court.
Then there was an agreement already made and then Sleswig decided they wanted more of the pie.
Well. Yeah, I don't. It was unfortunate. Uh, so.
But I mean, if this project is in our county, outside of maybe it's something that we look at. Tiffing and.
Yeah, now, and, and then you have to understand the basic premise of taxing structure was set up so that there'd be equality in the entities, you know? As status quo, that's where we're at today. TIF upsets that, okay? By its design, it allows, and I'm not saying it's. I'm not saying that's bad. It just does. It upsets. The fundamental taxing structure. If somebody's winning, somebody is losing. Okay, somebody's not getting what they need to get. Now, it's new increment, so the argument there is it's all new increment. It's graded and so.
They still get the old.
So they still get the old amount, but they don't get any of the new value.
They don't get.
So now, from a secondary road standpoint, it would be a huge boost. Okay, and that's why we're looking at it. Uh, we were gonna completely reconstruct E sixteen, you know, and use that increment to do that. At the end of the day, I think what we ended up with is a solution up there. That well, and it's finally, it, it has. It's been there for ten years now and it's done a really good job. And I think it was a good. Ultimate solution to that, so. Um. But yeah, just things to think about in, in going down that, that road. So. We'll go back up to two there, Graves. They're working on their pro slab. They're gonna pour one tomorrow, the other one on Thursday. So we'll have those done. By middle of next week. We should be able to allow traffic on that, but we gotta get the guardrails in, so the guardrail.
By the middle of next week, you didn't get all the slabs done?
Well, the slabs will be poured. That we, tomorrow and Thursday, yeah, but they have to sit and you have to take your time on them. So, yeah, by Tuesday next week, hopefully they'll be able to be driven on. But we have to guard it. You have to have a guardrail on.
I think we should open them on first.
We gotta have those on before we can open the bridge. So hopefully that'll all time out, so they'll get in there right away and get those done. That won't take them long. Couple of days, they'll have those done.
Our guys do that or do they?
It's contract item. We do not do that, so. Um, so that's, you know, we're getting there. You need just duct poly. Drain. Perfect. Yep, stop, take a look at the hole. Blind with PVC, epoxy sealed, so. Uh, again, my bridge crew does an. Amazing job. Got to greet people there. So they're the ones that did it.
Oh.
So, yeah, and they did drill a hole through there and put a sleeve in it. Took care of it ourselves, so. Um. The, uh. Minnow shop, they moved in this morning, which is good. We got a nice window here. If they can get in and get those footings in. You know, shouldn't take them long to get it ready. I'm hoping by Thursday or Friday they can get. Uh, you know, once they get it set up, they'll probably pour them all at once. So. Uh, hopefully that'll, that'll get in the ground. And I guess in the slab inside the building. You know, a building will go up and then they usually build the building and then put that in, so, um. They, so we're moving on that as well. Good news. Uh, Gray Crew should be wrapping up three hundred street. Had a little wet weather there last week, which was okay. Um, and then they're gonna move up to T Avenue and there's probably about. Two miles total in those three miles there that need to be done. And so that, that's where we'll end up the season. We'll, we'll start on the east end. And work our way back west. Uh, Bridge Crew, they're working on our avenue, a bridge there that'll, that'll wrap up the season. If we get to Thanksgiving. That's usually about it. Anything beyond there is a bonus. Uh, and that's only three weeks from this Thursday, so. Coming in in a hurry. Um, roadside, they're just, uh, Verdine's the only one working right now. He's going around and fetching up the pavements and when he's done with that, we're done. Other than we're gonna rent a seed L fifty-one, you know, it'll, it's late enough now where, you know, we're, we're gonna go ahead and. Get the hydrocedar out on a nice sunny day and go blow it on there and get it all covered up. And maybe we'll get some fall ride to grow, you know, yet this fall, but otherwise the seed will be laying there till.
Spring.
Till spring, so. Uh, that's the plan there. The, uh, Silver Queen, we approved. Uh, item five there, this is on that bridge on E sixteen that opened up in January. We're getting a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in Hundred Canyons funding for this. And this kinda never happened before, so they're not quite sure how to handle that from a. Administrative standpoint, so we're just moving things. Um, around in our program to allow them to kinda handle that money, so. Uh.
How much are we getting from that?
A hundred and sixty thousand from Hundred, Hundred Canyons. I think this is the first time any county's ever used it on a project like this, which is. Uh, an HPP, it's a contract bid project. A lot of times they're just local projects over, but. We should be using them on these. And that's what I told them. I said, there's opportunities out there, you know, for counties to use it. So there was quite a debate about this at our. Scoring commission meetings. And, uh, it's a good project. It's gonna have a flume, concrete flume outlet on it.
Cool.
That's a good candidate. And just, you know, the argument was we have other sources. Well, we do, but we have other sources for every project, you know? Here we have HPP and farm to market, cause it's on a paved road, so it's got farm to market funds that we can match with the bridge funds. Um, and, uh, but this fits all the other criteria. And my argument was, well, you know, whatever project we do, we just move the ponds on the chess table around. And you, 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 you have, you have funding sources to do everything. This just supplements that. But the DOT has not seen this before, so that's what this is all about.
You got you. And entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion to approve the. Twenty, twenty-four county five-year program resolution.
Fund, funding sources for the bridge?
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Schultz made a motion and Mr. Mulbauer seconds, uh, now. Funding sources for the bridge on east, on. E sixteen along, uh, North Line, section twenty-one. Any further discussion? All in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm guessing it ends up your five-year program resolution.
Oh, it says revolution. Yep, it'll be a roll call vote. Gene?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Greg?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Chair of both sides. Thanks for catching that guy.
Build the style of the red one and then Terry will sign into the. Yep. Thank you. Um, yeah, so that'll go in the. January letting. Things, everything's good to go on that. Um. You know, the, the contractors, I've had a number of them. You know, there, there, there's been a lull. Now, there's a lot of contractor projects coming up, but, uh. You know, there's just kinda been a lull. They're wondering, well, why is there more stuff being bid? So I'm hoping that we. Get good bits on this. See, I guess.
Contractors are wondering?
Yeah, they're looking, they're looking for some work to fill next year's. Some stabilization anyhow. Yeah, yeah. Um, we'll, I don't know, we'll see where that, where that comes.
Anybody have workforce if they're looking for work? Yeah, it was last year's problem. Had some sort of workforce.
Trying to find people that can do the work. So that's our next item there. And so, yeah, we've gotten a number of applications, quite a few actually. Which is nice to see again, so, um. But we have filled the, the dancing position, which I sent you all a message on that. Uh, my boat, um, starting on the tenth of November, he was returning. He was with us for a number of years and so. Um, and then, uh, we're interviewing tomorrow. We've got four individuals for the Dow City Truck Driver's Position and we got some good candidates, so. Really pleased to see that. So we're actually gonna get that filled right away as well. So maybe next week on the agenda, I'll have two of them that you can approve and. One day. Get that and move on, so. First, some new steel beams. Craig was just down. I was on the, you know, had Tim in it. We got, uh, that's why I said Oklahoma. There's, there's, uh, some steel beams down there that, um, you know, the pictures. Look pretty good. And I, I know the per, person we're dealing with is pretty reputable, but. look pretty good, and I, I know the person we're dealing with is pretty reputable, but, you know, these are those things where you kinda, you know, we don't know exactly where it'll go. What bridges or when, uh, but I'm pretty sure they'll fit into our program down the road somewhere, so I'm kinda looking at mine, and it'll be about a fifty thousand dollar steel beam purchase. They're used, uh, they look like they're in pretty good shape. You know, on about like sixty percent of new price, and we're gonna try to give them up for forty-five, they offered them at forty-seven cents a pound, new ones are seventy-six. So, you know.
Where at in Oklahoma?
I don't know. You wanna go?
It's a big state.
Uh, I thought, I was hoping they'd only be two or three hours away, or at least close to that close, we'd maybe just scoot out, take a look at them, but.
That's a little more than two or three hours.
But that's, yeah, depending on where you're at, it could be a long ride, and, but I'll do a little more checking on it, I don't know. We, uh, we'll land with that, but these things come up every once in a while, and, you know, it's kinda like that temporary bridge, which, you know, we're gonna work on three of those spans next year on a bridge over by West Side that just goes to one resident. It's a great fit, you know, that'd be a very economical solution in a particular area, so. You know, sometimes you, you don't know for sure what you're gonna do with them, but you know you, they'll probably fit in there and you might just buy them, so, true.
Todd, you bring that up, cause I've been watching a video this morning on prefabricated steel beam bridge that you just ordered out of.
You're watching a video on that?
Yeah, my video.
Okay.
Comes out of Montana. Sounds like you work with them and they're, I think it's a lot like you and your crew went to Eastern Island, looked at, it looked like a.
Some kind of bridge?
Yeah.
Ones we bought?
No, this is the one that, it's like the old crown sheets.
Yeah, yeah, where you put the beams and then you put the crown sheets in and.
But this was not a crown, it was more like a corrugated metal over the whole top.
And that's not a bad option, you know, that still, the, the timber plank are still pretty economical, if we can get twenty-five to thirty years out of it, you know?
And the only reason I, oh, I watched it, cause it's kinda, but, well, this is interesting.
Yeah.
But uh.
Old bridge crew kid.
That's right.
Can't let you over it, can you?
You know, and I've always thought there's with the Bailey Bridge, perfect example, there's always gotta be maybe a better way of doing stuff, and I'm saying there is, but so I watch these things to see if, if there is or not.
Lots of different ways to do load transfer, that's what we do, transfer the load from the vehicle to the ground somehow, you know? And there's just all these different combinations.
I'm not saying what we currently do ain't the best option we have, but at one time you, you showed concern that we were gonna be not able to get plank.
Yeah, the ones we're getting now are not pre-soaked treated.
They aren't?
No, they're, they're pressure treated.
Wondering what's the life of that gonna be?
Uh, copper naphthalene is what they're treated with. Shelby County's been using them for a number of years, and they, they're pretty happy with them, and so. You know, we're trying them, but, you know, the, the next option is either gravel, you know, you buy the deck panels and you fill it with gravel, that's an option.
What was the worry, pre-soak getting into water supply or?
I think that's probably, it's environmental regulations have kinda, you know, the boy's stuff that was treated in the fifties lasted a long time. That's just lasted really good, we still cut into them and they're still pretty good, but. Yeah, you know, concrete decks, um, deck panels with gravel and up there, probably a couple of options.
This guy was putting a video about even a county engineer in, in state of Washington, he was putting videos together, so.
Yeah. Ooh, yep. Interesting stuff. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm not trying to, yeah, trying to keep this toolbox full of options.
Oh, yeah, yep. Yeah, just when you priced it out, it was like three times the money versus a deck plank.
And then beams all be long enough to go?
You know, so I mean, I don't know, you know? Uh, the deck, the deck panels are right in that forty to forty-five, and the, the timber plank, the way we were doing it, was about fifteen dollars a square foot. You know, is what it was pricing out, so. Yeah, but, you know, and, 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 and just one other thing on the, on the, on the deck panels. So there's a county down in Decatur County, I think it was, and I was talking to their engineer, and they'd been using them, and they welded them, you know, to the top of the beam flange, and then they'd fill them with gravel instead of doing concrete. The problem, they were having some corrosion issues, and then the welds break and they'd started moving around on them, you know, so. They were kinda going away from the deck panels, which, you know, we were getting all excited about them, and then we looked at the cost, and it was like, you know, so I don't know.
I can see we're occasionally not always, we hit them with a motor grater too, yeah, or, or are they strong enough to withstand that?
Well, if a motor grater hits it with a mobile, it'll tear it up, but, I mean, they are designed to carry the load, you know? So you have the deck panels or a corrugated deck panel.
That's like a little crown sheet bridge, if a motor grater accidentally hit one, you got a problem.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah, you know, they tear them out, so that's why you wanna keep the gravel, you know?
Occasionally, you don't realize that you don't have that on top of there anymore.
Yeah. So. Yeah, just wanted to kinda circle back on it.
But.
You were gonna.
Oh, I was asking, them, them beams, did you, did they have lengths down on them?
Sixty foot.
Sixty?
Yeah, they're, they're thirty inches deep, sixty foot long, so it'd be, you know, some places where, you know, the, the next group of bridges that are gonna be problems. Well, they already kinda are a bit of a problem, they were built in the late fifties. And they're a concrete superstructure, concrete deck, usually forty feet, maybe a little longer, but generally forty foot or shorter. Um, and they have timber piling, and the piling are decaying, and so we go in and we put new H pile.
Timber under concrete?
Yeah, but they lasted over seventy years, or sixty years. They were never designed to last forever, and so they've actually done a really good job. We go in and we put holes in the concrete deck and we put H pile in, and then basically shore up the abutments. And that's a pretty economical fix, but you know, there's like twenty of those type of bridges in the county that are gonna have to be addressed at some point in time, cause then the back walls will start to decay and, and, but right now, it's just piling. And so this is a pretty economical fix, you buy a fifteen hundred dollar piling, you put four of those in each abutment, you know, there's some time involved in it, but the deck's in great shape, you know, so, but, you know, just kinda looking at some options on what to do with those.
How many, how many you say there are? Twenty?
There's just twenty, right around twenty of them, yeah, that type of bridge, so. Uh, the roads to roll, so I don't know if I, you know, but that map kinda shows the foreman and myself kinda taking a look at, you know, instead of rolling eight hundred and ninety miles a road with that that roller that gives us the modulus, we kinda picked out some that we thought we might be working on or might be candidates for a subgrade stabilization, perhaps Yoko, perhaps paving down the road, uh, depending on what goes on, there's a lot around Dennis because they're just high behind roads, you know, that's where we get the traffic and, and there, there are problems to take care of, but. So if you have any thoughts, you know, um, I think it'd be good to roll some of them to get some baseline data. You know, this is that roller I was telling you about, that, that rolls over and they're just gonna roll the center line and give us a, a K modulus, it's K value, okay? So essentially what it is, is it's the strength of that roadway, the relative strength of that roadway in, in terms of its ability to carry load. Okay, yeah, that time, and.
That's the Ricketts grab, yeah, that's the Ricketts grab.
Yeah, yeah, through that old avenue, but I think we could do I Avenue up there from, from Deloitte over to to uh, M fifty-five, I mean, and I, I, I just threw something up there, if you, you want me to leave the map up and I'll leave the blue marker.
Pretty busy.
I'll leave the blue marker, you can mark up what you want. My suspicion was when I first talked about it, well, there was one, one iteration was maybe doing all of the uh, farm-to-market roads, um, which would be about two hundred and fifty miles. And I just don't know what we could do to impact those, you know, you have to burn gravel, that might be another one, you know, that we could roll. And, you know, the, the, I think the reason why they decided to just do all of them is first of all, they were able to get a grant. Which, in my opinion, grants sometimes can cost you money, uh, you know, you have to kinda, you need to roll that out, but. Uh, and secondly, you know, it's the logistics of moving it around, however, I mean, you know, the thing's only gonna go like seven miles an hour, that's the fastest one of those things could go, seventy miles an hour, so. Yeah, they're gonna take a long time to roll all these roads, and, you know, we have to load it up and haul it, maybe we have to work with all to do that. We'll just load it up and we'll move it around for them and roll the roads, get our data and move on. So, but that was kind of, you know, got a grant, let's just do them all. Uh, logistically, it'll be easier to move it around, but yeah, we got dead end roads all over the place, we got level B roads, and they're gonna, they're gonna have to haul it a lot anyhow. So I just wanna do the ones I think can actually be something with, but I'll leave the marker here.
It looks like a good start.
I'd be curious to see how that's how it turns out, that three mile stretch there, especially if we have it in our.
We already have that in our.
I do, it's on plan, but I'm just curious to see what the data comes back onto it for.
But honestly, Dave, when I first saw this at the conference about a year, year and a half ago, that's exactly what I said, yeah. That one, I'd wanna use that roller to get a baseline before we do anything, then roll it after we do the subgrade stabilization and see if we've got it right. Okay, and then there was some fiber reinforced concrete that looked like it'd be kind of a good thing to kind of experiment with on that road too, so there were two things that came out of that. Thought it'd be good, wasn't ever planning on rolling eight hundred and ninety miles, great, but.
That still makes sense.
So, but I'll leave the marker there, if you all see something else, you know, uh, it cost us about eighty-three dollars a mile out of Crawford County's budget to do it, I've got about thirty-five to forty miles so far, so, yeah, I think that's doable. They might charge us a little extra for the bouncing around and stuff, but I'm okay with that too, I just.
Well, it's one thing to gather, I don't have a, I have no desire to do anything with it, and like you said, depending on what time of year they do it.
Yeah, well, I, I think the assumption, again, you know, without kinda beating this thing to death, is that it somehow will predict the health of your system. And I just, I'd have to see some really good data that correlates.
Yeah.
The information we get there that tells me, you know, what is it measuring, other than the strength of that time, you know, does it predict frost boils? I don't know that it does, does it, you know? I don't know. I'm not seeing, I'm not seeing what I'm gonna do different.
You see a frost, frost boil in the same place, ever spring.
You know, I, I would like to see, you, you brought up the burned gravel, that gives us a little better sample of the low sill soil.
Yeah, yeah.
And then something even down there closer to, like in Dave's farm's neighborhood. And then we, and then something way up north, then we've covered more of the county and it gives you an idea of what the soil bases are.
That, that's why I bought the map up, you know, I'm looking at roads that I think we might do something with someday, you know, and that's a good, that's a good perspective. Is that, well, let's get all the different soil types too, you know, or right, I mean, we're really in a land form transition. We have deep loss soils to the west and we transition into the glacial soils to the east. It's completely different from one end of the county to the other.
It is.
Yeah, so.
It's not on the bridge, could have.
Yeah, when you're driving piling.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so, so I'll leave that there, mark it up, I'll get, whatever we end up with, I'll get it back.
That's our draw.
That's yours to draw.
All right, thanks Paul. All right. Next on our agenda is the TAP update. Ladies, please come forward.
Come on down.
Somebody's welcome to use Jean's chair, I'm sure she won't mind.
Okay, I'll just pass these around, and this is just a little update, what we do. We're just here today, um, you support TAP and just tell, tell you what you're supporting, I guess.
Okay.
Um, we've been the food pantry since nineteen eighty-one. Um, so we've been going quite a few years. And we're, it's strictly run by volunteers, we get, we have no employees. The only, um, stipulation that there is to use it is that they live in Crawford County. Um, we don't check income or citizenship or anything like that. Uh, and when they want to use it, they come up to Louise's office and they show her proof of income, and then they get a card that they are eligible to use it. Uh, and then when they come down, uh, we just take a little bit of information, their address and so forth, and then they take a shopping cart around and volunteer helps them to take it off the shelf. They have just handed the food, they take out what they need, and we try to give food for two weeks, if, if it's available. Um, and listed here for the past year, you know, where, where they are in the county.
And another thing, these numbers, um, actually, we have a, quite a few people that come on Mondays and Thursdays. And if we have any, um, oh, like produce or maybe a vendor will bring bread or, you know, they're welcome to take whatever. Their dedicated cans and, and we actually have quite a few people and that, that isn't even in these numbers. We really have some great volunteers and we have wonderful board that, um, I mean, like Connie. Wes and some of them give a lot of their time and resources. It's a really good, good organization, I guess.
We have, uh, one volunteer and she just, she just orders all the food, and she takes care of the, keeping the shelves supplied.
Yeah, Mary, Mary's been on the board that long times too, so.
Great. Very good job, and they, they volunteered quite a few years down there. Really miss them.
Do you have any questions for us?
Well, I know when I, I was helping with the hunger fighters during COVID and all that stuff, you know, and then it seemed to work back and forth real well, using coolers and, and, you know, bringing what was remaining down to you guys and stuff. I'd get with a good co-alimental collaboration there, I thought, you know, I mean, it served the community well, I mean, that was extremely popular, the hunger fighters thing. So, I mean.
We really appreciate Louise, she's always, we have, she, she. She's always there to tell us if we have questions or.
Do you have any restrictions on donated like, um, vegetables or garden items or?
No, we're glad to get those.
You, you can, what about like beef or pork or?
We've got a lot of stuff from your garden. Oh. If it's USD expected, you know, if you take it to the locker.
So if a wine came through a locker, it'd be okay to go?
I'm just saying, I'm just thinking out loud, someone had a hog they wanted to take to Arcadia Locker, that would be epiphanies.
Very welcome. Very welcome.
Beef or, yeah. Would you talk to the pork or beef producers at all?
No, we don't.
Might be worth a.
Because of the economy.
And meat is so expensive, but that is really.
Well, you guys all been shopping, you know how much stuff costs now.
Said earlier about fifty dollar grocery.
Farman donated us a locking freezer, and they take care of it.
Oh, wow.
And then we probably have what, six or seven stand-up freezers that we take out, that we don't have to go into the locker all the time.
And the city does take care of the building down there.
Yeah.
And the liability insurance and utilities and I think that it's last time they've been, forty years, eighty-one. Been a while, so we thought we'd come back and see if anything you guys knew helps.
What I would propose, and, um, the forty dollars, well, first I wanna thank Donna, cause Donna, since she's been in the office, has been on the TAP org. So I didn't have to do that, and she's staying on during retirement, which I greatly appreciate. She represents the county very, very well. Um, TAP is one of the more, most efficient, cost-effective programs the county has. And that forty dollars just isn't going very far anymore. Um, I know volunteers are bringing items in to help, like if they need office things or whatever. Um, I can, through the general relief budget, very easily raise their monthly amount up to about a hundred dollars a month, which would be my proposal to start that November first without a budget amendment, and I could, we can maintain it next year, probably out with, uh, with no big increase to the budget. I would rather take, you know, we have all the money, so the only other thing in that department is basically funerals at Huddners, and since we went to cremation only, we're saving a lot of money on that. I would rather take one of like, one cremation and give that to TAP. We really, I, it serves more people, and with the pasta food, donations are down, because when we don't wanna spend money at the grocery store, we're not gonna buy a lot of extra food to give away, you know, to donate. So, that would be my, if that's okay with all of you, I'd like to start that November. Instead of forty dollars, have the show re, bring, bring that up to a hundred, it should have been done years ago.
What are the sources of income for TAP? Is it just volunteers that would give money to it, and then the county, I guess, gives this small amount? Does anybody else?
The city maintains that building, does all the snow removal, everything, if the roof leaks, they fix it, and the whole county utilizes it. So I think that the city's putting all that money and we need to bring that up. And a lot of these numbers, like, it's very deceiving in a way, we have families that are very migrant. They may come in and then from Charter Oak, and then three months later, they're living in Dow City. Or they're living in Denison and they move to Charter Oak, cause they think it's cheaper. People are all, and Connie has been in this world forever, she, we have a central development forever. And took on TAP and she retired, so she's serving, you know, the same family, we've, we've seen them over and over in generations, so. So, um, very migratory people in a way. A lot stay in the same place, but a lot don't. They move around.
We kind of a lot of new ones come in since COVID, I think. As you told it, we were able to get some grants and they're done now.
What you said makes perfect sense, Louise.
Yeah. I don't know if Connie, I'm sorry, because I had a phone call. Um, we're getting a new VA ban, by the way, that Omaha's coming with a ban today. So we're kind of distracted. We have been seeing a big increase in elderly individuals coming in for TAP. And they're the last ones to come in and ask, but when you get twelve hundred dollars a month for social security and you're paying rent at a senior apartment and you're paying medication and Medicare and when they come in, we love to load them up. Connie, and they're so generous with them. And then the other thing I do is I make sure they have that the state's paying their Medicare benefit instead of them. And if it's not, we do, I do all those applications for them to try and save them other money. And that's why they come to our office. Cause if they come in, they don't have food stamps, I'll help them sign up. I don't care who you are. We'll do it. And we may not see that person again because they're getting what they need. And remember food stamp money was doubled during COVID and now it's lower than it was before COVID. So that's been a big factor in this. Everybody got.
Everything cost double what it did during COVID. Yeah. That's painful, I'm sure.
Yeah. And with standard money for that group of individuals is so extremely low. It's like eleven bucks, thirteen bucks.
It's terrible. Yeah, it's terrible. Yeah, it's not good at all.
You say that, sir, you mean for the elderly?
For the elderly.
I worked at DHS for twenty-one years.
And, you know, this is temporary aid and so they are, you know, only supposed to come in twice a year. However, we are compassionate. If they come in a third, we'll still, you know, try.
It's hard to refuse somebody when they're standing there.
Yeah, yeah. And but Connie and I, we've done better. I, I think that they missed Donna because I am not. I'll pop Connie and we'll send it down and they'll make at least a small box for them or something. So we don't send anybody without anything. But we have maybe four or five families who would come every week if they could. And we're not a grocery store and they need to learn that. So, we've kind of done better. But if it's something urgent. You know, the other day before I left yesterday to go spend the day with Hilda, I put a sign on the door to just go down to TAP since I wasn't going to be here. And, um, a man knocked on the door and, oh no, somebody called because they had already been there twice. And it's a family whose the husband was disabled. He broke a leg or something. And I remember he was on crutches and stuff forever and then kids. They'd already gone twice. I called Connie and said, they're coming because we need to help that. Until he gets back to work type of thing. So we, we kind of know and get those things done.
The, the twice a year is just the guy life. And it can be grossing.
Doesn't.
Everything you say in here is recorded and on the internet.
You know, though, that's once every six months is a long stretch. You'll get hungry and a couple days again, you know?
It started as a temporary aid program. You know, and, and think of people with.
Back in nineteen eighty-one.
That was during the farm crisis.
When did that start? In the farm crisis of the eighties, so.
We've had like a single person come in and they get loaded. It's, you know, probably two cards of, he said, oh my gosh, this is going to last me a long time. But like if we get, um, oh, like, uh, desserts or something. I mean, we, we almost give them as much as they want.
They only last so long anyway.
We get from Walmart, we get some meat sometimes, you know, that are outdated. TAP goes out to McDonald's and picks up from McDonald's. We get Smith vending sandwiches and, and those things that that's kind of what we give to the more than twice a year.
Yeah, they got a limited shelf life anyway. So, yeah.
We're always hitting the payment, looking for anything.
Sure.
Sometimes all we do is ask. They just say no. Yeah, okay. Tell us no, that's fine.
And we have volunteers that are running out to those places and getting them. Volunteers just aren't working in the, in the building. So.
And Kuanis, they still? The Kuanis group still helps with pickups?
No.
Okay.
Well, Wes does.
Yeah.
One, I guess, yeah.
Well, I think that's smart use of the money.
We appreciate it. Everybody.
And we like to see you come down and look us over and we're proud of our, our facility and.
Be careful, Connie, I'll put you to work.
It might take Walmart and windows someday.
They're wonderful campers.
Yeah, yeah. Fun group and just a nice crew to work with.
You meet some interesting people come through. And a lot of them are very immersive to be there.
Yeah, well, you know, that's, I said, you know, it's, most of us have a little bit of trouble asking for charity, you know, I mean, and, and people are at times in desperate situations.
You know, I think they just aren't given the box. They're taken through. And some of those people just need that interaction. With somebody that.
Kind of like how somebody cares. And if you're all volunteers, it's obvious you do care, you know? That's great.
We probably taking up enough of your time and.
Well, thank you so much. I think you've got the board's consensus, ma'am. We can't vote on it, but you got our consensus. How's that?
I like that.
All right. Uh, discussion families, crisis center, update of the agency. I was.
Can I sit here?
Welcome.
Hi, I'm happy to be back again this year. Yeah, I think this is like my fourth year in a row. Um, you guys should have, I think, received our letter, um, whether that was email or through standard mail, but I will pass it out again just in case. Sorry, they're really stuck together. Um, so this is just. Perfect. So this is just the standard letter that we send out every year. We did kind of update some stuff on here. Um, to really include like breakdown of what it cost us here in Crawford County to provide the services that we do. We're nonprofit, so we do receive federal and state funding as well, but it doesn't cover near what it takes for us to run. Um, and so serve the local victims and survivors in this county, um, who suffer at the hands of violence. I'm also going to pass around, um, a stat sheet. This is, so I like that it's statistical in the sense of it shows numbers. But this is more than statistics. Like these are people in our community. These could be our neighbors, um, you know, the person that's working at the grocery store. Um, it could be, you know, one of the local tellers at one of the banks, things like that. So these are actual people in Crawford County who have suffered at the hands of violence. And so when we look at this domestic violence in the last year, we've served fifty-eight. So that's on like a big number.
So that's higher than normal?
It's about the same. Like, I feel Crawford very steady. Well, we don't lack by any means. We have some months that are super busy. I brought Jill. She's the new me. She was the advocate, I was the advocate before Jill. Um, and then I took the coordinator position, but, uh, was it September? That you had ten referrals in one month, like ten DV referrals in one month, just in Crawford County. Um, there's other months that she gets maybe four. So it really does vary, but oh, at, at the overlook of the whole year, it stays about the same.
How do you get a referral?
So we work really closely with a lot of local stakeholders. So the law enforcement, police department, sheriff's department, we work very closely with Collins Office. And we're all over town. So we are making sure that our information is everywhere. So people, whether they're reporting to law enforcement that it's happening or not, they have access to our information. We do have an office in Denison. While we don't blast our address, because obviously we don't want perpetrators showing up um, and putting people in danger. Um, but they do know that we are here. Um, and so we just really, we present to the schools, we present to local businesses, we attend like coalition meetings. We are literally everywhere we can be, just constantly preaching about our services because the statistics show that everybody eventually in their life is going to know at least somebody who's been affected. And while it might not be you directly, it still affects you indirectly. And so we provide services to people who are affected indirectly as well. And, you know, so in addition to just domestic violence, I mean, we've served twenty-three for homicide and violent crimes, right? So we hold the, um, the acronym for that is HOVC homicide and other violent crimes. Um, and so I'm actually filling in for that advocate position now because that's currently vacant. But, I mean, we're serving so many people who have been affected by not just domestic violence, but it can be assault, arson, um, attempted robbery or attempted burglary, attempted murder, you know, all these different things. Anything where they've been affected by crime, um, and those usually come from law enforcement and your county attorney's offices. We work very closely with the hospital here, um, as well as the smaller towns, um, outside of Denison, but in Crawford County, just letting them know, like if you've got somebody that's disclosing, because right, they have those screening questions, you know, do you feel safe at home? Things like that, that they can call us. And while in an ideal world, we would get the funding from the government to have somebody onsite at a medical clinic. Because we do have that option. But funding wise, we only have that in three counties out of our seventeen. Um, but they know that they can call us at any time and Jill or myself, or even Maritza, who's our bilingual advocate that covers Crawford. One of us is going. Um, I might not be an advocate anymore, but I'm still right in there because that's, that's a deep passion of mine. Obviously I've been, I'm in my, I'm almost at my sixth year. Um, and so, you know, we're really making sure that we're partnering with local, uh, doctors' offices, even therapy offices, you know, chiropractors. People who are going to see these injuries and might not put together that they were caused by violence. And so then they can, we can educate them on how to maybe ask some leading questions to get maybe people to open up about it a little bit. We also have a phenomenal program that we do here in Denison for housing. Doesn't have to be just domestic violence or violence. We have a general homelessness project that we're still working on through. Let's see, this year, and I think through twenty-five. Um, and so housing is such an issue because there's just not enough places to rent, uh, when you've got people fleeing violence or just homelessness in general. We have an advocate, um, his name is Brady, who is helping to get them housed. We're trying really hard to find local landlords in Crawford. We've got a good handful that we work with, um, that will say, hey, I've got something coming open. You know, November sixteen, you got anybody? And we're like, yes. You know, so we're really working closely with those landlords too. Um, we're really just trying to get people off the streets and safe. Um, so that number is at twenty-eight. So that's about two a month that we're, that we're housing in Crawford County.
We had that many homeless?
It's either homeless or fleeing violence. Yep. So, I mean, we don't break them down into the differences per se. Um, but typically your homeless have also been affected by crime. So at some point in their life, usually, I can't say always. Um, and then Family Crisis Center steps hold our statewide crisis line. So anybody can call that twenty-four hours, three sixty-five. And obviously they're going to get somebody. And in Crawford County, the last year, they've answered sixty-one, um, crisis calls. And so they are there to advocate and talk them through, um, their situation. They, if it's like, you know, they're at the hospital, they're going to dispatch one of us. They're going to call us and say, hey, we've got somebody you need to go. And we do. Um, we are always on call. It doesn't matter if it's Halloween, Christmas, if it's two AM, if it's four PM, we're all going to respond on that part of our job. And so when we kind of look at that, in the last year, we provided, um, cost-wise, um, nearly a hundred and three thousand dollars worth of services here. Um, and so while federal and state funding doesn't cover that, we, we usually come to the county and, and ask the county if they can help, um, fund that. Because we're very passionate about what we do. Um, yeah, and these are our local residents here. So, yeah. Any questions for me?
You typically see the victims as women or children, or is it all across the board?
All across the board. We serve, you know, the typical, when people hear domestic violence, they think women as the typical victims. What we do see seventy-five, sixty, seventy-five percent women and children. We have a decent amount of men. We're advertising that, you know, we want men to know that we believe them too. It happens. We all know women can be just as vicious as men. Um, and so, you know, they face those stigmas um, of not wanting to report, but we've seen a lot of men coming through. Um, so we, yeah, we don't discriminate at all. So.
You know, I, I would say that since I took the GAW, I've learned a lot more about mental health and other. Way more than I want in some cases. But, you know, you, you brought up, you know, the how it affects us. And, you know, with the drug addictions and, and alcohol abuse, you know, most of that stems from traumatic, especially with, with children. You know, a traumatic incident, you know, maybe just wanting. And if it's repeated traumatic incidents through the violence, I mean, that's where you really see it affecting the whole community at large. Where so, you know, if you can get these people in place where they're safe and they realize, hey, somebody does care about me, you might actually head off the next drug abuse or the next
Absolutely.
school shooting or whatever, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Yeah. So, I mean, I, I, I do see the value in things like this.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. You know, we work very closely with our schools because we want schools abuse starts early, whether they're seeing it at home or sometimes even in your early relationships. And if that's all you've ever seen, you're not going to know any difference. So we try to intervene usually by middle school, um, and really preaching, you know, this is what a healthy relationship looks like. And we read off these qualities and this is what an unhealthy relationship looks like. Um, and so, you know, in just that alone, just providing that education and, and working with all, all these other agencies, you know, your Jackson Rosecrants, your WIC clinics, you know, all these types of things to provide our information and present is really helping so much. Um, we kind of took that hundred and, almost hundred and three thousand dollars and broke it down by the, uh, number of clients and how long we've served them and stuff. Because it really varies each person. Some are in crisis mode and they only need help for right here, right now. And we've got some, you know, when I was an advocate, I worked with a family for, I think it was sixteen months. And then she, they still kind of just like check in from time to time. I hear from a little bit of each of the family members like, hey, I just want you to know I'm doing great. I really appreciate your services. Those are amazing moments that, you know, it's like, oh my gosh, like it really made a difference. And sometimes it's not always monetary, you know, we do provide whatever we can, obviously funding wise, to help them in their situation. But when we look at the amount of money that it costs per client, on average, it costs us eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars per client that we serve. Physically, call center is about twenty-one dollars, um, per call. And so that's kind of where we come up with those numbers of nearly a hundred and three thousand dollars. But, you know, if we're putting somebody in a house, you know, we're covering, we're paying that deposit and the rent, you know, to get them on their feet. We are working on stability with them. Of here's, you know, let's help you find a job or, you know, we look at the whole picture. Let's list out all your barriers. Childcare, another huge crisis, right? Because there is like waiting lists to get kids into daycare. So we really work on all the different areas that are keeping them from that stability. And that can take three months and it can take three years, but we're there as long as they want us to be there. Um, and so that's kind of where those numbers come from. Yes, I thank you for taking the time to listen. Um, I am going to leave my cards here. Not only for questions, but just because if you ever decide you need.
Before you pull off, Jean, did you have anything? Jean's not able to make her day, but she's on Zoom.
I loved you. I know her.
Nope. I've been listening and I appreciate everything you do. Your services are so valuable to our community. And thank you for all you do.
Yeah, thanks, Jean.
You're welcome.
I appreciate, I love you guys.
Appreciate your time.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Have a good day. Stay warm. It's chilly.
We've commissioned. Okay. Okay. You're up, neighbor.
I really don't know how this is going to go. So are you?
Just wing it, we'll wing with you.
Usually tell us how bad of a.
Run that bike. Yeah, there you go.
How bad the crowny is. I mean. Oh, it wasn't too bad. It was just the new roads. I got a sec on it if anybody wants it. Either one.
Either one.
Megan said she'll send it in, so.
Yeah.
Kind of a late start. We didn't really get much growing until June. Had the biggest problem as far as the county went was the new roads, which that's all the time, you know? Had a couple of call-ins. Only got told to resign once, so that was good.
Wow, you're a natural man.
You're doing a great job. Well, long story short, I, I talked to the kid, not the, the original complainer. So as a lack of communication, so it all got set straight. So we got that taken care of. Uh, that was resolved between those two. Mostly all verbal. On my part, um, did send in a couple of letters. Didn't hear anything back on it, so I assumed everything was kosher there, so. Didn't really, like April, I didn't put in any time, other than just checking the phone, which come to find out, I had the wrong code anyways, so.
Oh, yeah, there was a little phone debacle, wasn't there?
But we didn't miss anything anyways, so it was all good. So.
So it was kind of a quiet year, but not even the weeds were growing hard this year. That's.
Yeah, water, huh? And, uh, I guess, but you have to take care of that in the field, then yeah, you're going to need a couple more people.
Well, I guess there was one where we did take care of weeds for two years in a field. I think that already got them addressed. Must not have been brought to your attention this year.
No, I never heard of it, so.
So we have to submit a report to the state? Is that what they recount as that?
Did they have a kind of a status quo year or your first year today?
So you're going to do, willing to do again next year?
I will know by the first of the year.
Okay.
Cool. Let us know. As soon as you know.
Stuff enough to avoid this year.
It'd be a matter of, uh, well, I, there's a couple of irons in the fire, so we'll have to see how those go and.
Well, I know we'd love to have you back.
Absolutely.
So. Other than that, any other question?
Did it go as planned or what you thought? I know you. I had expectations going in, but did it kind of, okay, yeah, this is kind of what I envisioned, or was it totally different from what you envisioned?
Uh, yes, I didn't really know what to expect, so. One of them signed.
Actually, I'm going to keep this one unless you need it.
No, I don't need it.
Yeah, I've got the one that's signed by you.
Okay. Yeah, so I didn't really know what to expect.
I know Jean and I did the interview and we didn't, I didn't know exactly what to tell you to expect. So I guess we're on the same boat there.
It was, as far as experience, I was fine with it. You know, I really didn't have nothing bad to say. You know, the one gentleman that was mad, I called him back on my cell phone and basically just told him it was my fault because I thought it was resolved and actually give him my cell phone number so he wouldn't even have to call in. So he was, the end of the conversation, I kind of took the wind out of his sails, so he can, he was very cordial at that time, so.
Thanks to your predecessor, the problem, I mean, he did a good job. The ones that have been consistent, wait, year after year after year after year, you know, you've got to bring it up, so.
Yeah, basically.
Your job was easier because of that.
So, um, you did a great job, yeah. Basically, I'd swing in by seeing like pasture out of control, swing in, say, hey, gotta do something with this and, okay, okay. Or it's already planned on, just never got to do it, so. And basically about all it was.
Good. Good.
Do you think that should be on it?
It should be on there. Nuclear war, it's going to be mulberry trees and Twinkies. So you'll still have a job.
Aiding Twinkies.
But we sure appreciate what you've done this year.
Oh, no problem.
You're able to continue, but you know, life is what it is.
It was, it was entertaining. Talking with the spray guys out, you know, when I'd go out and check the phone, it was about time that they were on break or getting ready to go out. So that took about fifteen, twenty minutes to get out of there, but.
Get cornered by chop chops, the way you mean.
Where y'all do today? Well, you know, I got over here.
He's a good egg. We appreciate that. Fill them up. So hopefully we, you know, works out, we'll gladly take you back.
I had an entertaining motion to accept the annual report.
So moved.
Our second, we'll let Bean get in there. Second was made by Ms. Hayden. All in favor, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, states, so by saying aye? Chair votes aye. Okay. Jason, thanks. Appreciate you much.
See you next year.
And we understand when you can get calls that are a little frustrating. We get them frequently.
Oh, yeah.
I can say frequently, but we get them.
Well, my, uh, my job with Haley's, that was kind of the deal there. I had to kind of front the unhappy customers, so to speak.
Were you the serviceman?
No, I was in, I was in between the sales and the service. So I was.
You were running offense or defense all the time?
Yeah, yeah. They tried to hire me back because Tom goes, well, I haven't found anybody with your tallness yet. When you're getting your, when you're getting your butt chewed. I go, well, I guess. Get a chewed at home all the time, so it's kind of normal. No, it'd be more of the eight-one-one card.
We'll have it in the office for her to sign.
Jean, you have to make sure you get in to sign that you voted.
Okay. I will.
Thanks. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
Yeah.
Jean, you didn't get a chance to speak during the supervisors' reports. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, you know, I went to the meeting, you know, the PTO, and then we did have mental health. Uh, and I can give, bring the numbers and things like that. When I'm there on Tuesday, it'd be a little bit easier if you have things to look at. So I'll have a longer one next week. How's that?
Thanks for the warning.
Thanks, Jean.
You bet. Thank you for your patience. This Zoom is not perfect for me. Trust me.
I understand. I have to do it sometimes too. Any citizens' input? Are you sitting there, Madam Prager?
I am, yeah. I have three things. Oh, my gosh. First of all, and this isn't really, this is just something kind of fun. The DOT is excited to announce that they officially did the public launch of the Iowa Mobile ID. So you can go on to either your Play Store or the DOT website and you can sign up for Mobile ID and it looks like this. The cool thing about it. If you guys, if you guys get carded, you know, when you go to the bar or to the liquor store or something, you can show that. The other thing you can do with it is, um, they're, they're working with the airlines and stuff.
Ding ding, I was just going to ask that. Run through my mind.
The airlines aren't all accepting it yet, but it's really cool. And then you've got your ID right in your pocket. Mobile ID.
I was going to say, are they, I wonder if they're thinking about doing something where you can actually even do the express through the check lines and stuff with that.
I think anytime you need to show your ID, you will be able to eventually be able to have access to it right at your. Carry your driver's license around. You don't have to wash it, you know, when you stick it in your back pocket or.
Is it an app you download?
Um, yes. And there's a little scanning thing on here. I don't know if it'll work through here. QR code. No, I don't think so.
But this is the driver's license portion would have a expiration date, huh?
Yeah, so it shows you your issue date, your expiration date, your document number, and what class you have of your driver's license. So I think that's really cool. I think that's.
I just see some people through the airport screening, you know, on that express lane, and it's because they've been checked. And I've got my TWIC card, which means that I've been actually checked.
Yeah, that's a little bit, that's a little bit different. From what I'm understanding in Iowa right now, they are still working with the airport in Des Moines. I think they're trying to get this launched with them. But I don't know if Epley or anybody else has that, so that's kind of.
Can they do that? Someone said, hey, I heard I can get one on my phone. Can they come up to your office?
You have to get the ID and then download it. I mean, you. You, you have to go into my office and actually get a card and then you download it from there.
So that's not, so that won't work for me coming home on Friday?
No, probably not.
No, nice try though.
Probably not. Okay.
Did it work?
Just can't go on the website, DOT's website.
And, and get a mobile ID instead of a driver's license. No, I don't, I don't believe that's, that'll ever happen. I don't believe.
You would get a new picture, not using the old picture that's currently on your license.
You, you take a selfie.
You take a selfie. All right.
This isn't even my picture from my driver's license. It's just a selfie that you have to take and then they make you line it up correct and, you know, fit within a certain box and then take it. So it's, it's a cool thing.
Yeah, that's a question I still, I'm thinking, because you got an underage kid. I just say, I would come in and grab the form for, say it's me.
You're gonna, I don't remember.
Steals my form, not that he needs to anymore, but. And, and get a fake ID out of it.
No, I had to put in information from my actual driver's license.
So there's a check some balance.
Right, you can't just go on and take a picture and say, hey, I'm.
Who would want to be?
The other thing I wanted to tell you guys is Becky from Ignite Pathways in Woodbine, and I have been talking. They are trying to set up a, a new tester for ELDT and I'm trying to partner with them. The tester would come to their site, do all of the testings for an individual to get a CDL and then maybe send them to us to do the tests down here. And that would be a win-win because I'm afraid we're going to lose some revenue by people going to the bigger colleges and then testing and then just coming in here to get issued. So we, they would test in, they would do their classes, their schooling in Woodbine.
Guys that do the stuff in the fall and spring.
Elevator, yeah. And they don't have the test site capabilities and they don't have a stoplight in Woodbine. So there's different things that you would need, so it could be a win-win for all of us. They test there.
They can't test in Logan even, can they?
I don't think.
Or I don't think they do. I should say they can't.
No, I don't think Logan has CDs. No. Okay, so there was that. And then this is my most exciting news, and I'm going to pass this around, Terry, if you want to take one and pass it.
Taxation news?
This is our CDs. And I just want you guys to see that I've been very aggressively investing. A lot of times in the past, it was five hundred thousand dollars that was being invested. I've kind of stuffed my neck out a little bit and I've invested a million and we have it on almost each month. The compound interest, the third from the end, shows what we have made so far on those five CDs. The last one shows at maturity, all of those, our, our projected revenue is four hundred ninety-eight thousand dollars.
And all these CDs there?
Yes. So.
Yeah, I like that five point six zero stuff. That was nice.
Yeah, yeah. So we've been very aggressive at investing the money.
Excellent.
The top one is getting ready to mature on November ninth. I've already contacted the bank and they will roll that for me at five point six. So we'd be going for, we've been going, we'd go from three point eight five, where we made thirty-eight thousand five hundred and we'll roll it to five point six. Most of over twelve. I have like, I have an option of six, nine, and twelve. What I try to do is have one that matures each month, so if we need some money, I can cash it in. A little bit out of sync because bless you. I don't really want to have to deal with it in September and March. So I kind of doubled up in October and then I think there was maybe April. Yeah, there's two in April.
All the banks in the county?
Yes. Yes. And the banks are all listed over here.
I'm sorry.
What I do, what I do Craig is I send out a bid request. Did that not show up on yours? Oh, shoot. I'm sorry. I can make you a new copy. It shows all the banks here on the sides. What I do is I send out a bid request to the banks and ask them to bid, give me their best rate. Put a little stipulation on the bottom that says, even if your rate is better than the others, I still have the right to choose which, which is best for the county. Typically, it is the highest rate that I'll take. Right now, we have six point five million in savings. We have four point five million in IPAT and we have a little over seven hundred and fifty thousand in Crawford County Bank. So I don't feel like tying up a million, you know, this many millions that I'm hurting us for anything.
That's amazing, though. When you look at the end of these current CDs, almost just shy of five hundred thousand.
Yeah. That's what we've been talking about, finding other ways to make revenue.
To all our funds, right?
The distribution of interest.
Right. I shouldn't say all, not all, but, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you very much. You're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Great news, Sherry. Thank you.
When I first got elected, I think I talked to you about it and you said that we were actually negotiating with the banks trying to get a higher rate than what they were offering.
And we just did that again, even on our, just our savings accounts. And I don't have that right at my fingertips, but we just recently asked them to increase our rates for our savings accounts again and, and they're doing it, so. So that's a decent amount of money for the county.
Very good news.
Yeah, I mean, we've talked about how other ways to raise revenue, you know, differently. With interest rates going up, this is a way that wasn't available in the past.
And one of the banks, for sure, is, is renewing my CDs or giving me my CDs with a clause that they won't charge a penalty if I had to cash it in early. They all can't do that and I understand why they don't, because if there's a better rate, they're afraid I'll cash it in and.
Get the other rate.
Get the other rate, which I wouldn't do to them, but I just want it for reassurance in case we have some big project come up. In case I overextended our.
Excellent job.
Thanks, sir.
Great job, Sherry. Good job.
Good, good job, team.
Yeah, good job.
Go team.
Yes, right, right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's just quit now and end on that high note.
That's why I made that number three.
Did anyone else in Zoom land have any citizens' input? If you want to pat Sherry on the back along with us, you're sure welcome to. All right, hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Mr. Dugstark, made by Mr. Mobar Beaty to it, Jean. All in favor, states, so by saying aye?
Aye.
Have a great day. Stay out of the mountains or bears.
I've talked to all of them since last.
I'm not going to stay, but I think.